Ladies and gentlemen, it is now 5:30 on Tuesday, June the 17th, and it's time to call the Union County Council of Order. Um, let me get this careful, little speaker, hot speaker. Um, what we'll do is we'll begin with the invocation from our Chaplain Danny Bright, followed by the pledge of allegiance from Vice Chair David Sinclair.
Captain Bright, I have a thought, thank you for your work, the great day, thank you for, we thank you for your mercy and greatness and for planting salvation with love and spending time with people. And we just pray, I pray for every person who's with us today, or when they, thank you for their concern for our candidates, our love for our candidates, or that it's great that you lead and guide us as we go through this week and this evening, and that everything we do here, we please do you, Christ amen to God.
All right, so look, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. At this time, I will turn the floor over to Madam Clerk for our roll call.
District 1, Danny Bright.
President.
District 2, John Quinn.
Sinclair, any comments or questions? Comments or questions? Comments or questions? All, um, all in favor of Ms. Jennifer Roark say aye.
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 Any opposed, like sign? And it is unanimous. District three?
I'll make a motion that we reappoint Mr. Bill Rochester.
Mr. Bill. He might be very close to us right now. Do I have a second for Mr. Bill?
A second.
I have a second for Ms. Smith. Any comments or questions? Comments or questions? Comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, like sign? It is unanimous. District five?
Um, William Bill, um, I mean, uh, Scott Parker.
Scott Parker. Okay, I have a motion for Mr. Scott Parker, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilman Glenn. Any comments or questions? Comments or questions? Comments or questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign? And it is unanimous. And finally, Dr. Flood.
This name has not been on your list, but I'd like to, uh, suggest Curtis Sims, he's Adamsburg resident Clemson graduate, and it's my fault that his thing has not been in Kendra's hands, but that's who I nominate.
I have a motion for Mr.
Curtis.
Curtis Sims from Dr. Flood, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Carolyn. Any comments or questions? Comments or questions? Comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of Curtis Sims, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? And it is unanimous. Library board being Jennifer Roark, Scott Parker, Mr. Bill Rochester, and Curtis Sims. Moving to the fire departments. Again, as a reminder, these are at large. Um, I would ask for one at a time, and you will see the numbers of vacancies that you have above. Starting with the bottom fire department, do I have, um, a nomination for a member of the bottom fire department?
I'll make a motion that we appoint David Eves.
David Eves, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Ms. Smith.
I'd like to, what, Jeremy Gollman?
Wait, wait a minute, one at a time. All those in favor of David Eves say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I take it as unanimous. Ms. Smith?
I'd like to nominate Jeremy Gollman. Jeremy Gollman?
Jeremy Gollman? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Comments, questions?
I got a question or comment. Is he not a resident of somebody that's already on the board?
Yes.
Is he on, is, is he a relative of his own board? Or a member of the, uh, management of the board?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure him and Chris Scott, who is a board member currently, are the relatives.
To what?
I'm not sure about that, but I mean, uh, for sure, I know they're relatives, but I don't know. So I didn't know if we were, I knew some of the ordinances, we had talked about trying to keep family members off of them together.
Yeah, yeah. It, it actually is listed in our ordinance, um, that, uh, no nepotism of the border department, uh, management.
I'm not against it, everybody, I just, you know, I just thought we'd discuss that.
Cause I got some.
You, you, well, we haven't got a, do we have a second?
Do you have a second?
Or do I have a second, you withdraw, and then I get a second to withdraw? You withdraw? Okay, who would like to withdraw their second?
I withdraw the second.
Okay, so John Glenn offers the second to the withdrawal. Would anybody else like to make an appointment?
I'd like to appoint Dan Garner.
Um, Phil Garner, his brother's already on the board.
Yeah, his brother, yeah.
How about James Lancaster?
James Lancaster?
I'll say it.
We have a motion and a second for James Lancaster. Any comments, questions? Comments or questions? Comments or questions? All those approve James Lancaster, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? It is unanimous.
Aye.
Oh, you opposed, okay, four to one, five to one, I'm sorry. Okay.
So since Mr. James Mayne is on the fair board now, he can't be on the bottom.
Yeah, that's correct. So what we'll do is we've got two, um.
What names?
You gotta hold those for a while, then do we find?
Yeah, we could, we could, we could, we can find out the relationships and whatnot else, and we return that.
The relationship, uh, is more what the relationship would be.
It does, yes, and so that's the other thing, you have to have it spelled out with that nepotism. But we have to find out what the relationship is, to see if it fits that.
Okay, Phil, I need, um, Jeremy Gollman and Rodney Gollman, one the father, one the son, did you know that?
No, ma'am.
Okay, well, that's, that's what I got, did you know that?
No. It pretty much closes the bottom.
We'll move on, and, and we can always come back to that. Going to Buffalo.
Buffalo, I'll make a motion that we appoint Letitia Wages.
Letitia Wages, I have a motion for Letitia Wages, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilman Flood. Any comments, questions? Comments, questions? Comments, questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Next.
Anybody?
Three.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Craig Price.
Craig Price, do I have a second?
I'll second. Ms. Carolyn, second.
Yes, I'm gonna give Ms. Carolyn that, because Councilman Flood. Um, Ms. Rutherford, Councilperson Rutherford, second. Uh, any comments, questions? Comments, questions? Comments, questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? And it's unanimous. Okay, go ahead, Dave.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Les Gibson.
I have a recommendation of Les Gibson, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilman Glenn. Any comments or questions? Comments or questions? Comments or questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? And it is unanimous. Your, um.
We have, we're going to hold it, but we need to readvertise.
Correct.
Yeah.
So we will leave that vacant, um, one position and get back. Um, moving to Carlisle.
I make a motion, um, we, uh, nominate Willie Gibbs.
I have a nomination for Willie Gibbs for Ms. Carolyn Rutherford.
I'll second.
I have a second for Councilman Flood. Any comments or questions? Comments or questions? Comments or questions? All those in favor of Mr. Willie Gibbs, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? It's unanimous.
I'll nominate Tanya Sartor.
Who, sir?
Last one, Tanya Sartor.
Tanya Sartor?
Yeah.
Do I have a second for Miss Tanya Sartor? Do I have a second?
I have a second.
We have a second from Councilman Glenn. Any comments or questions? Comments or questions? Comments or questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Unanimous. Next?
I'll nominate Robert Clark.
Robert Clark. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilman Sinclair. Any comments or questions? Comments or questions? Comments or questions? All those in favor of Mr. Robert Clark, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? And it's unanimous. That was only for three vacancies. Moving to Cross Keys?
I'll nominate Burma Nations.
I have Mary Burma Nations, do I have a second? I have a second for Councilman Glenn. Any comments or questions? Comments or questions? Comments or questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Unanimous.
I'll make a motion to nominate Terry Lawson.
I have a motion to nominate Terry Lawson for Ms. Carolyn Rutherford.
I'll second.
I have a second from Councilman Flood. Any comments or questions? Comments or questions? Comments or questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Unanimous.
I'd like to nominate Dawn Allen.
I have a motion to nominate Dawn Allen.
I'll say it.
I have a second for Councilman Sinclair. Any comments, questions? Comments, questions? Comments or questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, y'all get enthusiastic. All those say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? We almost done. Unanimous. Okay. Anymore for Cross Keys?
Ellie Smith?
Ellie Smith, you make a motion for her?
I'll say it.
I have, I have a motion and second. John Glenn made the motion, Flood made the second. Comments, questions? Comments, questions? Comments or questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Kelly Kelton, we have three districts, three, three person at large.
Mr. Chairman, I have questions.
Fire away, sir.
The Gargers, how are they related to Kevin?
I have not the slightest idea, sir.
Since there's a master servant law in South Carolina, it would prevent if, if, uh, if they get appointed, uh, him's remaining chief.
I, I, I cannot answer that question. I do not know. But that is definitely something we can go and look, look at.
I, I think we have to look at it before we proceed with those two numbers, please, Michael Robinson.
Okay. So we will hold these.
For those who don't know, Kevin Garner is their fire chief out there.
All right, so is somebody going to nominate Michael Robinson?
I'll nominate Mike, Michael Robinson.
I have a, I have a motion to nominate Michael Robinson, John Glenn? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from John Flood. Questions or comments? Questions or comments? Question or comments? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign? And it's unanimous. Moving to Phillipi?
I will nominate Jane Taylor.
Jane Taylor nomination by Councilman Flood, do I have a second?
Second.
Well, I have multiple seconds, um, I'm gonna give that one to Ms. Smith. Um, comments or questions? Comments or questions? Comments or questions? All those in favor of Jane, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Unanimous.
I want to nominate Mike Odell.
Mike Odell, do I have a second for Mike Odell?
I'll say it.
Mm-hmm. I have a second for Councilman Bright. Questions or comments? Questions or comments? Questions or comments? All those in favor of Mike Odell's, please say aye?
Aye.
Golly, y'all getting puny on me.
Puny.
All right, all those opposed? It's unanimous. Is there another nomination anybody would like to make? I know y'all sent another name.
Hey, I'll, I'll check this out.
Dean. Don't matter.
Oh, all right, I'd like to nominate Dean Robinson for the Phillipi.
I have a motion for Dean Robinson? Do I have a second to Dean?
Second.
I have a second for Councilman Glenn. Comments, questions? Comments, questions? Comments, questions? All approving Dean Robinson to be on the Phillipi Fire Board? Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? And we'll take that as unanimous. That was gonna be, I knew that was gonna be the tough part of tonight's council. I appreciate y'all helping me muddle through it. Those that we don't have answers for, we will get back. Now we'll proceed, moving back to the agenda. Um, I need to make a presentation of, uh, a service award presentation. Um, this is going to go to, uh, Mr. James Speedy Sumner for five years of service as, uh, working for our recycling center attendant. And Michael, um, I know you're back there, so I won't make you come up and get it, but you can get that later tonight. Tell, tell Mr. Speedy we appreciate him and what he does. Um, at this time, I would like to recognize Ms. Darla Morgan with the Daughters of the American Revolution to make a presentation to council.
Before I make the presentation, I would like to read a statement from our President General of the Daughters of the American Revolution. This certificate bears the signature of the President and President General Pamela Edwards-Rouse Rock of the Daughters of the American Revolution. It recognizes individuals, businesses, groups, and organizations for their proper use, correct display, and papered presentation of a claim in the United States of America. And this certificate is presented by the Battle of Camps Chapel in Sparkville, South Carolina.
Did you push up?
Thank you, Ms. Ford. All right, at this time, we'll move to reconsider moving forward on the process of updating the Amendment to Ordinance 284, and the amendment, amendment being pertaining to the building code permit fee as requested by Councilman Glenn. After last month's discussion, um, it was voted down. Councilman Glenn asked to be reconsidered if we could adjust the minimum permit fee for somebody just coming in for, um, a minimum fee. That, we did make that adjustment from a hundred and twenty-five dollars to fifty dollars after going through the math. And, um, Councilman Glenn was, was good with, um, presenting this back to council. As a reminder to council, our building permit fees have not been updated since two thousand and nine. We are still going to be lower in our building permit fees than any other county around us. The intent was just to cover the expense of providing these services of a, uh, building official. So with that being said, um, I move forward to have a motion, second, um, to re, to, uh, consider allowing me to move forward with first, second, and third reading to increase our building permit fee.
Can I ask a question, or do I have to wait until the motion?
We need a, we need a motion and a second, first. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
I have a motion from Councilperson Rutherford, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
I have a second from Councilman Glenn. Now, Councilman Flood?
My question is this. Are we even covering the cost of that building official?
Yes. We're not presently, but with the new fee schedule, we will. And it's on a, it's attached to what is known as the ICC or International Building Codes, BBD schedule, which is your value of per square foot across the United States. Actually, Union County, we're only going to use seventy-five percent of that value. That will determine the cost of the house based on square foot. Then we will take that cost, that, that, cost of that house that's going to be built by that square foot, and then we will reflect to the building permit brackets that you have underneath you. These brackets are basically come right out of the ICC book that every building official and every, um, licensed building contractor have. They have access to this. And they will be able to go down and see exactly what their permit fees are before they're ever even come in to create that permit fee, and hopefully ours will be online within the next six months.
Okay, uh, let me be clear, uh, so the water's not muddy. These houses in, in Buffalo Creek, let's say they're two hundred thousand bucks apiece. We're saying seventy percent of that, so that'd be one forty, so the fee would be five fifty.
No, sir, no, sir, that's not how that works. Square footage is, um, when somebody comes in to do a per, they can walk in today and say, I'm gonna do a permit for a hundred thousand dollar house, but I'm gonna build a fifteen hundred square foot house.
Okay.
All right, they can pay you a hundred thousand dollars, so that's all it's gonna cost. But in reality, we know that they're going to sell it for more than that. That's where the BBD comes into play.
So this is cost.
It establishes the value.
Okay.
Then you apply the fee to that value.
I got you. Just clearing it up.
Good. Any other questions?
I, I just want to say I'm not clear with raising of building permit tax. I'm not even clear if this existed in the Georgia state legislation. Maybe they can take the candidates and issue that. They not, not clear if it exists. I think, they, they, I have to look at all the home. So you all want to go right off, and that's your piece of wood, and I have to go down with local bills, and I have to finish. And then I have to, uh, pay that, and this. The most likely, I have to go back, and done, or get done with it. Ask them if I can use the legal system. Uh, I think this, uh, office is paying more, I think it's actually been paying more. For example, one house in Union County, built to, uh, he talked about two hundred thirty thousand dollars, uh, bid. County assessed that house one ninety-seven thousand dollars, so they overappreciated it. Sixteen, maybe, average thirteen hundred dollars a year. And probably that, a little fourteen, you pay them more than one ninety thousand dollars, probably that. I don't think that building permit fee would be covered for ninety-nine thousand. The house stays another eighty-six years, another hundred and eleven thousand dollars, uh, local bills, uh, we bought that. We got, oh, I would think that the building permit and even, uh, the, uh, property only do an extra due payment for sale. Partially, they pay themselves a shop, that they personally, and we go and live in all of the parks. Their revenue wouldn't go to the expense of that, so I'm wanting to say I'm not clear with breaking any tax, including this building permit tax. That's all I think. Oh, one more thing, can I get a little call back?
Absolutely, I'd be glad to get you a real call back. I will say that the term or the use of a fee is designed for those people using that fee cover. So taxpayers' amount of money doesn't have to go with paper something, that they're not utilizing, no services that they're not using. Not everybody in Union County is building a new house or adding on to it. All we're trying to do, my intent as a supervisor, is just to make sure that the office covers its expenses. Uh, that is all I am trying to do, and I don't want to put a burden on anybody. Uh, our fees are still going to be substantially lower than surrounding counties. With that being said, are there any more questions?
Yeah, I'll, you know, Danny had to say, I'll have that. This is the cost of doing business. If a builder wants to build here, he's gonna pay the fee. Uh, I, I don't think the taxpayers would accept the cost of supporting his business. We didn't give me any tax breaks when I reopened my office. We didn't give me any, anything. Uh, and this is the cost of doing business.
Do we have a schedule or a list of what our neighboring counties do charge so that we could compare our rates to theirs?
I already have, and our, our rates are much cheaper. Um, I wasn't going to that, um, drag on this conversation, but I would be glad to provide that. But I would like to move forward to have our attorneys go ahead with at least updating the ordinance so I can present, um, reading one.
So this is just for reading?
This isn't even for a reading. This is approval to take it to our attorneys, gonna spend the money on.
Well, the bottom line is, I can tell you, I just paid a hundred dollar building fee to put a sign on the front of a building in Woodruff. A sign. The sign itself didn't cost the fifteen hundred.
I'm not against it, I just like the more information.
I have all that folder, I just didn't want to drag it all out in front of everybody and have to go through what everybody else is charging.
So often, it's just a bonus something to have, for the, for the, you know, that much.
Well, I could, I could have brought it now. Um, we didn't ask for it last month, or I had it this one. With that being said, roll call, I'll call for a question. Ma'am, Paul.
Mr. Two, John Glenn?
Yes.
District Three, Edson Blair?
Upstate, we'll deal with half further regulation.
District Four, Amy Smith?
Yes.
District Five, Phil Hunter?
Upstate.
District Six?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Three, Essens, Two, Stane, and One.
So it passed, we'll move forward. And I'll have first reading presented, and, uh, I'll also present, I'll present y'all with a, um, additional documentation showing you what neighboring, neighboring buildings are, are offered.
Can you just email that to us?
Excuse me, sir?
Just email that to us?
Yes, I will.
Thank you, sir.
Item nine is consider approving a contract with Kataba Regional to come in and do a self-evaluation of an ADA study and plan for all county offices. The expense of this plan, uh, is not to exceed ten thousand dollars. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I have, I have a motion from Councilman Flood, a second from Councilman Sinclair. Um, but, uh, the point here is, is that we have to do these every five years. Um, and it is an expansive plan. The COG would actually bring somebody certified in this, come in and do the entire study to every building we have, and they've estimated not to exceed ten thousand dollars. Any questions? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion from John Flood. So we've already done motion and second. So I call for a question, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Moving over to our next item, um, we went out to bid for a joint city-county maintenance shop. The bids were opened on Thursday, June the twelfth. The price came back, the lowest price at this time, um, was four million, four hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. Now that was the lowest bidder, um, this is an RFP. We still have to go back and review all of the bids, um, to make sure they met the intent. As an RFP, you do have a right to negotiate here if you need to. Um, I'm just sharing with you that the bids are over the four million dollar project that the city and county jointly worked together to create. Um, but we were surprised that it didn't come in that bad. I wanted y'all to see what these numbers were. Um, we will attempt to negotiate, maybe get that price down a little bit, see what we can do. But still, as it stands right now, that would only cost us about two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars more, and we could cover that very easily out of our capital fund. So that is for information at this time, and I'm sure probably ends July, when we know more information, we'll provide, come back to y'all if we need any additional funding. Um, resolutions. Uh, at this time, we're going to enter, um, a resolution authorizing the county supervisor to submit a voluntary cleanup, non-responsible party application on behalf of Union County to enroll certain real estate properties in Union, um, specifically the dry cleaning building, to the Brownsville Voluntary Cleanup Program. Before we, um, have a motion and a second, I do have Tyler Lewis and Ms. Angela Kirkpatrick with the COG here. They would like to make any statements related to this at this time.
Sure. Uh, I can just switch to the voluntary cleanup contract itself. Uh, what this does, this is a state document, it's like an environment, environmental services. Uh, we have multiple projects that have gone through this, uh, within this region. Um, Town Council did one, uh, back in two thousand thirteen, fourteen for Jonesville Millsite. Uh, what this does is it offers any of the, the county liability protection for the property, uh, with, with the state. It also checks a couple federal boxes. Uh, the main thing that it does is it says that you are non-responsible party, uh, for that, that property. When you're taking it, and you're saying we're going to repurpose this, uh, because you have a grant coming, uh, funding sources are repaid, funding sources, state funding sources, uh, federal, CNG sources. Uh, it's a part of the project to develop and space and, uh, make the community better. Have to take any questions? The resolution before you is, uh, something that is a standard resolution, that's been agreed by the legal counsel in county.
I don't have any questions about that particular thing, but I would like to speak to you after the meeting, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, do I have a motion to accept this resolution?
Motion.
I have a motion from Councilman Glenn. Do I have a second? I have a second, Councilman Bright. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? And I take that as unanimous. Again, I made a, a adjustment to the ord, the agenda, um, so we will skip section twelve and move right into our ordinances. The first ordinance is ord, third reading of ordinance number four oh five. This is a fee in lieu of for Project Spring, which has been announced now as fine for Organic Americas LLC. Um, this third reading encompasses basically three items. Um, first off, it is, uh, the fee in lieu of, which this industry will pay five hundred thousand dollars, um, a year for five years as initial, and then more as, as they grow. Um, it also enlarges the boundaries of our industrial park and multi-county parks. And it also is authorization to sell the one hundred and sixty acres of land of the Trakers property. All of this is captured into one ordinance. Do I have a motion to accept this ordinance?
Motion to accept.
I don't know, I'll speak at once. I love it. So, who, 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 who wants that one?
I don't care.
I give it to Flood and I give Danny the second. How's that? So. All right, so are there any questions or comments? Questions or comments? Questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? And it is unanimous. Third and final reading of ordinance number four oh six, the adoption of an operating and capital budgets of Union County for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
I have a motion from Councilman Glenn, second by David Sinclair, it's a twenty-seven point four million dollar budget with not raising taxes and providing a cost of living increase for our employees. Are any questions? Any questions? Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? All right, phew, y'all about wore me out tonight. Um, any committee reports? All right, no committee reports. I know we have our Madam Clerk here. I didn't see our chair here tonight. Um, Madam Clerk? Ms. Kitchens, would you like to say anything to council?
I would love to. Thank you for letting me be here as always. We have been moving toward with, with updating the court hours and making things a little bit brighter and a little bit better. And the thing that I'm most excited about today, we sent off twenty big books, starting with number one forty-three, to all prosolitions today. So hopefully in four or five months, we're gonna have all of those books digitized, which will help our citizens and surrounding counties to go in and look up these online instead of having to come into the office. So we've got a good start on that, excited about it. You can't wait to get all that.
Okay. Next is the supervisor's report. All of y'all were sent the supervisor's report out on email. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Debbie, I.
Thanks, good.
Yeah, thanks, good. It normally is, that's what I always get out of her, so. Um, I sent out my supervisor's report to members of the press and the council. Did y'all have any questions specific to any of this? Did you read any of this?
I did.
All right, um, with that being said, um, you read over that, you have anything that you need, please let me know. And, um, outside of that, are there any announcements from council? Any announcements from council? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. I have a motion from Councilperson Smith, second by Councilperson Rutherford. And if y'all are done.